We're now live. Okay, we're now in public session. Members of the Board of Trustees Committee on Faculty, Staff and Administration, please respond present when you hear your name. Chairperson Lorraine Cortez-Vasquez.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Ken Sunshine.
Present.
Trustee Clark is absent and excused, as is trustee Palacio. Trustee Vivalo.
Present.
Terrific. Professor Coughlin is also absent and excused, but Professor Maureen Matarasi, the faculty alternate, is with us today.
Yes, present.
Terrific. Louis DiMilio, the student rep. Don't see him. Oh, is Via Warocker, the other student alternate, on? No, okay. But we have a call. So this public meeting of the Committee on Faculty, Staff and Administration is now called to order. I would like to take a roll call attendance for members of the Chancellery. Members of the Chancellery, and there's some people, I just want to make sure I get you all, because I wasn't given some of your names. So don't be offended. We will make sure you get added. Chancellor Matos Rodriguez.
Present.
General Counsel and Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs Derek Davis.
Present.
Terrific. Executive Vice Chancellor and Chief Operating Officer Hector Batista.
Present.
Terrific. Senior Vice Chancellor Glenda Grace.
Present.
Vice Chancellor Dorian Gloria.
Present.
Then we have a new Vice Chancellor James Gala. Welcome.
Thank you. Present.
Terrific. And Vice Chancellor Pamela Silverblatt.
Present.
Terrific. President Thomas S. Secondegby, the Cops liaison.
Present.
Hi, Thomas. Okay, President Delgado may be joining us later. He might be delayed. Peter Nwoso, the Provost and Senior Vice President for Academic Affairs at Lehman College.
Present.
Elizabeth Hendry, the Provost and Senior Vice President for Academic Affairs at Queens College.
Present.
Tony Thomas, the Chief Legal and Labor Relations Officer at John Jay.
At Brooklyn College.
I'm sorry, at Brooklyn College. My bad. I'm looking at the next, something else. My bad. President Rab, I see you have also joined us today. And I think we're joined by Dean Elgoria Harrison from the School of Health Sciences, Human Services and Nursing.
Present.
Terrific. Hopefully, I didn't miss anybody. Lorraine, it's all you.
Okay, great. Thank you. We are going to go with, the first item is the resolution to approve the Committee on Faculty and Administration report, B1. I'm sorry, it's the approval of the, sorry.
Okay, so just before we, before we go to the, it's our usual voting, everyone. So we're going to announce the resolutions and ask for members to respond only if you'd like to abstain or oppose an item. Otherwise, your vote will be recorded as a yes vote. So yes, it's the minutes of February 28th. Do you want to move them?
I move the minutes of 28th. Do I have a second?
Angelo, I see your hand up. Okay.
Okay. Any discussion? Corrections, amendments? Hearing none. Let's take a vote.
Okay.
Any extensions, any objections? None. The vote carries. Now, we would like to address the action items, Item B, which is a policy calendar. We have several of those today. So Policy Item B1 is a resolution to approve the Committee of Faculty and Staff Administration report. I'm going to ask Vice Chancellor Dorian Gloria to provide further background on this item. Vice Chancellor.
The May CFSA report contains actions entered into the CUNY system of record between January 28th, 2022, and March 25th, 2022. The report contains a total of 267 actions, including 60 appointments and reappointments to tenure, 167 fellowship leaves, and 24 ECP interns, and regular appointments. I want to acknowledge the committee chair's request for a report that will provide a more complete context to this information, and we will aim to have that for the next committee meeting.
Thank you so much for that. Now, I move the approval of Policy Item B1. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Hi, Ken. Any discussion? I will move for a vote. Any extensions or objections? Hearing none, this vote carries. I want to thank you, Vice Chancellor, for acknowledging that we will have some more details on a regular basis on this report to contextualize it for us a bit. All right? Thank you. And I think the, one of the goals of this is to ensure that we're not, you know, we want to really manage, not only the process, but also manage, you know, a headcount. So thank you for that. Approval. Now, we're going to go to Policy Item B2, which is a resolution to approve the memorandum of agreement between the City University of New York and the Professional Staff Congress, CUNY, to include research professor titles in the 2017 to the 2023 collective bargaining agreement. Vice Chancellor Dorian Gloria, could you provide some background on this item?
Yes, thank you. At this meeting on June 25th, 2012, the Board of Trustees approved the creation of the titles Research Assistant Professor, Research Associate Professor, and Research Professor, collectively researched professors or research faculty. At that time, the university set the original terms and conditions of employment for the research professors. In 2020, the Professional Staff Congress, CUNY, filed a petition at the New York State Public Employment Relations Board to represent the research professors and collective bargaining. On September 21st, 2020, the university agreed to recognize the Professional Staff Congress, or PSC, as the collective bargaining representative of the research faculty. Subsequent to recognition of the PSC as the collective bargaining representative, the parties engaged in extensive negotiations over the last 15 months to reach an agreement on salary increases and other terms and conditions of employment for the research faculty. The parties have reached a tentative agreement that covers all the terms and conditions of employment for the research professors and incorporates the titles into the parties' 2017 to 2023 collective bargaining agreement. If approved, this resolution resolves that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York hereby approves the memorandum of agreement between the City University of New York and the Professional Staff Congress at CUNY to include the research professor titles into the parties' 2017 to 2023 collective bargaining agreement, subject to ratification by the union. This resolution also resolves that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approves the salary increases provided for the research faculty in the memorandum of agreement upon ratification by the union. Thank you.
Any discussion on this item? Hearing no discussion on this item. I move this item. Do I have a second? I did that in reverse. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Hearing no discussion. Can we move this for a vote? Any abstentions or objections? Hearing none, this vote carries. I, Policy Item B3 is a resolution to appoint Elaine Reese as Commissioner of the Civil Service System of the City University of New York. Again, we'll call on Vice Chancellor Dorian Gloria to give us some background on the candidate and on this position. Thank you.
Thank you. Elaine S. Reese is currently serving as Chair of the CUNY Civil Service Commission, where she was first appointed as a commissioner on June 1st, 2006. And Ms. Reese served for over 20 years in the in-house legal department at Ogilvy &amp; Mather, culminating as General Counsel, Executive Vice President, and Secretary of the Ogilvy Group, a global public company in the communications business. Ms. Reese was General Counsel and Acting Deputy Commissioner of the New York City Department of Employment before joining the New York City Department of Information Technology and Telecommunications. And Ms. Reese has a distinguished career serving as a board member in many diverse organizations, including the Legal Aid Society, Columbia School of Social Work Workplace Center, ABA Fund for Justice and Education, American Council, excuse me, American Corporate Counsel Association, New York Chapter, the New York Civil Liberties Association, and the Columbia School of Law Alumni Association, as well as many bar association committees. Ms. Reese received a BA in English from New York University, a Bachelor of Law from Columbia University Law School, a Master of Law from New York University, and completed the executive training program at Stanford Graduate Business School. If approved, this resolution resolves that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York hereby authorizes the Chancellor of the City University of New York to reappoint Elaine S. Reese as a Commissioner of the Civil Service System of the City University of New York for a term of six years, to commence on June 1st, 2022, and to expire on May 31st, 2028. This resolution also resolves that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York also authorizes the Chancellor to reappoint Elaine S. Reese as Chair of the Civil Service System of the City University of New York for a term of six years, to commence on June 1st, 2022, and expire on May 31st, 2028. The reappointment of Ms. Reese for a statutory six-year term will enable the City University of New York to continue to operate under the rules and regulation of its Civil Service Commission, as approved by the New York State Education Law and is governed by the New York State Civil Service Law. Thank you.
Thank you. I move the approval of Policy Item B3. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Thank you. We'll now vote. Please don't respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. Hearing no extensions or objections, this item has carried. Policy Item B4 is a resolution to amend the Brooklyn College Governance Plan. I'll now call on Tony Thomas, Brooklyn College Chief Legal and Labor Relations Officer, to provide background on this.
Good afternoon. The governance, the governance plan of Brooklyn College was last amended and made effective by the Board of Trustees at July 1st, 2019 meeting. The Brooklyn College Policy Council is responsible for approving all new governance proposals and assuring they meet the standards of the trustees of the City University of New York and the standards of Brooklyn College. The current Brooklyn College Governance Plan does not state the required vote necessary to pass amendments to the Brooklyn College Governance Plan. The proposed amendment establishes the, that amendments to the Brooklyn College Governance Plan under Article 8 must be approved by two-thirds plus one vote of the Brooklyn College Policy Council and by the President for submission to the Board of Trustees. The proposed amendment was approved by the Brooklyn College Policy Council on November 3rd, 2021, and the adoption was recommended by the President thereafter. If approved, this resolution resolves that the proposed amendments to the Brooklyn College Governance Plan be adopted effective May 16th, 2022.
Thank you so much. I move the approval of Policy Item B4 on behalf of Brooklyn College. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? We'll now vote. Hearing no extensions or opposing votes, this item carries. Thank you. Items B5 and B6 are resolutions to reward Maniak Ghoswami and Diane Greenfield, early tenure at Queens College, with an application of the Bylaws 6.2(c)(2). I now call on the Chancellor to provide background on these items. Is this wrong?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two outstanding members of the Queens College faculty are up for early tenure. They have impressive publishing and fundraising records of their own. Dr. Ghoswami is a special reputation in the field of computer research, have continued to expand his high-level recognition of his work with an impressive array of scholarly publications. He has also been extremely successful in securing funding grants for the university, and is the author of nearly 30 peer-reviewed articles on the field. And I have to also commend the Provost of Queens College, who's here, Elizabeth Hendry, who was an active participant as we tried to recruit Professor Ghoswami several years ago to the Computer Science Department at Queens. Professor Greenfield is really one of the great success stories of our school, of the Queens College School of Environmental Studies, has a joint appointment with the SRC, and has published six peer-reviewed articles and a first-author book chapter since she started in the university back in 2011. Very active in getting external grants to support her lab research, which is focused on harmful algae blooms. And so again, two really outstanding members of the faculty at Queens College for consideration.
Thank you so much, Chancellor. I move that this item be approved. Any discussion? Items. Hearing no discussions, we'll now vote. Hearing no extensions or opposition, that this vote carries. Thank you very much. Congratulations to both of you. Policy Item B7 is a resolution to transfer faculty to three newly established departments within the School of Health Sciences, Human Services, and Nursing at Lehman College. I now call on President Delgado to provide further background on this item.
President Delgado, I think, has been delayed, so the Provost, Peter Nwoso, is going to step in.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, members of the Board of Trustees. Good afternoon to all of you. I do want to just briefly provide some background to this request with regard to my, on behalf of my president, the really, the restructuring that you have before you, for which we're asking for support for transfer of the faculty members in the current Department of Health Sciences, that would ultimately be dissolved upon your approval to three new departments. That work began in 2014, and we are where we are today. Earlier this, this afternoon, we had the approval of the Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research for this particular restructuring. It is a department that is one of our fastest-growing departments at the school and certainly within the college. 1,900 majors, 21 faculty members were asking to be transferred within this one department to these three new departments that would essentially reposition the college to meet the needs of the healthcare sector within our community and certainly beyond. And I might add that since we did submit this particular request, proposal, or resolution, we have continued to work in this arena to add faculty lines to the, to the department itself and to these, these areas, in particular, the department of, that we call Health Education and Technology. We've also included the Health Services Masters in this, to further advance our mission as an institution. And that Masters Program in Health Services Administration is going through the approval process at this moment. And so we're asking for your support for the transfer to help strengthen the work going on at the college and certainly within CUNY to advance our mission and strategic priorities and that of the university. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. I move the approval of Policy Item B7, which is to transfer faculty. So do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ken. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, we'll call a vote. Hearing no extensions or objections, this vote carries, and congratulations. Great to see this movement continue.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, members of the board.
Good. Thank you. Policy Item B8 is the resolution to name the Francis M. Webb Endowed Scholarship for Student Parents at Eugenio Maria de Osos Community College. I call on Vice Chancellor Glenda Grace to, Senior Vice Chancellor, sorry, Glenda, to provide further background on this item.
Thank you, Chair. I'm so happy to see President Coco de Phillips here with us to talk about this amazing endowed scholarship for student parents. This scholarship that is being proposed, or this, that's being proposed, is from, it's named after a prize-winning poet and author of short stories who retired from Osos Community College in 1992. She's a mother of four daughters, seven grandchildren, and 11 great-grandchildren, and she understood while teaching the plight of student parents who often brought their children to class. And so this past spring, she pledged $100,000 to establish an endowed scholarship, which would offer tuition, fees, and other college-related expenses to support student parents. And it would help in a number of ways, including helping with childcare, helping them to better focus on coursework, complete their degrees, and create positive trajectories for themselves and also their families. She's going to complete her pledge at the end of this semester, and so the resolution seeks to, to name this endowed scholarship for student parents after Francis M. Webb.
What, I love these, these, what a, what a wonderful tribute, and thank her on our behalf. I move the approval of Policy Item B8. Do I have a second?
Second.
Right. Any discussion, other than to thank her profusely? Hearing no discussion, I move for a vote. Hearing no objections or sanctions, this vote carries. Congratulations, Osos. I, this Policy Item B9 is a resolution to name the Cecilia Isdorf Adjunct Faculty Advancement Fund at Hunter College. Again, I call on Senior Vice Chancellor Glenda Grace to provide some background on this.
I, one, I just want to thank everybody for really giving, for allowing us to have such great opportunities. And I see President Rab is also here. This is, this advancement fund is named after Cecilia Isdorf, who was committed and a beloved adjunct professor at Hunter for 33 years. The professor passed away in 2010 and actually was a supporter of a college, and then before she passed away, contributed $100,000 to Hunter College Foundation Fund. In celebration of her legacy, her daughter, Annette, and son-in-law, Ethan, generously have pledged $120,000 to the Hunter College Foundation to be used for, $100,000 to be used to endow a fund to benefit adjunct faculty by supporting the research and professional development activities, including conferences and materials. And $20,000 of the fund, of the gift, is going to be used as a current use fund to provide emergency financial relief to adjuncts. Their commitment, the pledge will be fulfilled by June 30, 2023, and we, this is just an amazing resolution to help value to part of our community.
That is, so, yeah, these are moving. Anyway, I move the approval of Policy Item B9. Do I have a second?
Second.
Great. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, we'll call a vote. Hearing no extensions or objections, congratulations, Hunter. This is an incredible gift and opportunity. This vote carries. Item, Policy Item B10 is a resolution to name the Charles R. Brown Wrestling Room at, Wrestling Room at Hunter College. Again, Vice Chancellor Glenda Grace, give us some information on this. Thank you.
So we have, again, just different, a varied group of resolutions. This is naming a wrestling room at Hunter College after Dr. Charles R. Brown, who served as the wrestling coach at Hunter from 1970 to 1981. He's also a member of the Hunter College Athletic Hall of Fame, and his wrestling students, three brothers, Proano Brothers, Dr. Ivan Proano, Galio Proano, and Silvio Proano, dedicated and committed and pledged $100,000 to support the wrestling program and student act in memory of their coach. Also, joining the Proano Brothers is Phil Rosenthal, who is a chairperson of the Hunter College Athletic Hall of Fame Committee, and who contributed an additional $10,000 to this effort. And so this is just another example of coaches and others supporting our students, and that, not only helping students, but helping other students. So this is just a wonderful legacy gift.
Yeah, this is a great legacy gift. These are the ones where you know where CUNY, you see CUNY's value in these former students and former faculty members, just their commitment continuing to Hunter. So I move the approval of Policy Item B10. Do I have a second? Any discussion, which I just preempted? Hearing no discussion, we'll now call a vote. Hearing no extensions or objections, congratulations again, wrestling at Hunter. I, this is great. This vote has carried. Policy Item B11, you know, Jennifer, we could have, we could even have a joke about that, but I'll sustain.
I'm not going to say anything. No, but Hector should say that, because we're raising money for athletics. It's exciting.
It is exciting. Policy Item B11 is a resolution to name the William Van Den, Heel, I'm sorry if I pronounced that so wrong, FDR Elevator at Roosevelt House at Hunter College. Again, Vice Senior Vice Chancellor, can you give us some background?
Okay, one, I want to make sure I have the name right. So Jennifer, please, President Rab, please correct me. It's being named after William Vander Hoovel?
Vanden Hoovel, yeah.
And this involves, not the wrestling room, now we've moved to the historic Roosevelt House, which was acquired from President Roosevelt in 1941, and which features a 100-year-old elevator once used by FDR. That's the elevator that's being named in Ambassador Van, Vanden Hoovel's name. As most of you know, Roosevelt House has been used for a decade by the college as an undergraduate public policy institute, and the late Ambassador Wolden, William Vanden Hoovel, served as its advisor, patron, and supporter. He was a lifelong FDR expert and enthusiast, having hiked as a young man from upstate New York to Hyde Park in 1945 to attend Franklin Dela... in 1945 to attend Franklin Delano Roosevelt's funeral. And he actually was admitted to the ceremony by the late president's widow. He was a passionate human rights advocate, and as president of the International Rescue he championed the cause of the world's refugees and spearheaded the 50th anniversary celebration of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights in 1998. After the ambassador passed in 2021, his family, friends, and admirers contributed over $87,000 in his memory to the Hunter Count, Hunter College Foundation. And additionally, money was bequeathed to Roosevelt House. And realistically, the, the West, the elevator that we're talking about is a surviving relic of the original Roosevelt family home and was used by FDR in his wheelchair following his recovery from polio as the future president regained his ability to maneuver himself around the family home. And no space in the building meant more to Ambassador Vanden Hoofel than this tiny but significant spot once used by his greatest hero. And this resolution would name that space in his honor.
That's, I'm telling you, it get better and better each, each resolution. So I approve the, I move the approval of policy item B11. Do I have a second?
Second. And can I say a word? I knew Vanden Hoofel well for many years, since my early days in public life in New York. He was truly the consummate, wonderful New Yorker. And he had a, a style that was very unique and, and really the, unfortunately, I think, one of the last of a certain type. And it's a pleasure to vote on, on this and tribute to Hunter for making this happen.
Thank you, Trustee Sancho. I think, and also you know that the ambassador was from very early on, was a huge champion of restoring this home, so I think it's a perfect tribute.
Yeah, nice, really nice, nice touches, Jennifer. We'll now vote. Hearing no extensions or objections, we promptly announced that this has, this resolution has carried. Three hits, Jennifer. With no more items on the agenda, I move to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second, Ken?
No, I'm going to wait on, no, second.
All right, all in favor? Hearing no oppositions, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very, very much.